Okay, thank you, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the special budget workshop meeting Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. Let's go ahead and start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Okay, moving on to agenda item number two, that is public speak. Eric, do you wanna see if we can roll through, if anybody wants to contribute to the public speak portion? Again, I would just, I guess, request everybody that we stick to the agenda, which is obviously the budget. Well, we're here to come up with a decision on what budget to present to the town meeting on Tuesday, May 24th. So we just kinda keep it pertinent, succinct, if you could, and to the point, and we'll go ahead and get started. Eric?
Okay, I'm gonna do it on the order in which it appears on my screen. First Valerie Hurdin.
Hi, I would just like to say, I'm sorry that we're doing this again this year, having to come back to the table. I do feel that the Board of Ed and myself, we presented a fiscally responsible and an academically sound budget. I've been saying that for a while. You know, I would encourage this Board of Finance not to make any cuts to the school. If that happens, unfortunately, at this point, having received no money in many years, in seven years, we would be cutting services. And it's, you know, still pandemic, post-pandemic COVID times. At this point, you know, we would have to contemplate cutting some mental health services. We'd have to contemplate, you know, cutting our AHM services to our kids. We don't wanna do that. These are things that our kids need. But we would literally have to look at cutting services and programs to the kids, and I just hope that this board will agree that that would not be in the best interest of children right now.
Thanks, Val.
Okay, next up on my list, Jerry Kremay.
I wanna thank the Board of Finance for your quick response and having this meeting. And I have to echo Valerie's sentiments. I guess, I'm not sure, why do we keep doing the same thing year after year, when it doesn't seem to work really well? I think we need a different system, because this keeps on happening. And I don't have any answers. I just have a lot of questions. And I apologize, and I'm sorry to the Board of Finance, that you have to go through this over and over again, year after year. I don't know how you do it. But I appreciate your efforts, and I too ask that you not cut the school budget. We really need everything we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, next on my list, Stephen Fuss.
Stephen, you're muted. If you're trying to speak, we're not hearing it.
All right, Stephen going once, going twice. Okay, and then there are three phone numbers on there. There is last number, last four, five, five, seven, nine. Would you like to speak? Okay, I think that's actually Marina, so nine, five, three, seven. Would you like to speak?
Yes. My name is Elizabeth Partridge, and I'm on 151 Lakeside. And I have a couple of things to say. First of all, and I'm gonna make this pretty quick, so that should be not an issue. First of all, my recollection is the budget is going up something greater than 10%. And I guess I'd like to know what other people are getting a 10% increase in their income? Because most of the people who are paying these taxes, or a good portion of the people who are paying these taxes are retired, and they are not getting a 10% increase. Will not get a 10% increase next year either. So I think that that's part of the issue that you're facing. The second thing is, I came out of the corporate world for many years, a good 40-plus years. And when I was in the corporate world, we had what they called TASK every year, T-A-S-K, a task. And sometimes you had a task every year, and they'd say, here's your task, 15%. And you were charged with reducing your budget by 15%. They didn't care how you did it, just do it. All right, and that's where a lot of these people are coming from. They're not coming from an educational world, where the budget chief keeps going up year after year after year, right? And then the third thing I wanna say is, after hearing the people say, oh, we actually have to have something of, you know, increases in the Board of Ed and so on, you can't reduce those dollars. It made me think of when I was a kid. My father was on the Board of Education for many, many years, and then was on a town council subsequent to that. And I remember when he was on the Board of Education, what he would say would be, all we have to do to get the people to agree to the budget is tell them that we're going to make the kids walk based on what the state requirement was. So anyone within a mile for elementary, a mile and a half for junior high, and two miles for high school was no longer gonna be bused. And the parents would go, oh, my God, you can't do that. And they'd approve the budget. And I think that that's what we're hearing now. Oh, we're gonna cut services, and you can't do that. And so you want people to buy into that. I think that you probably would have heard some of these things coming out in the town meeting. But what you said in the town meeting was questions only. And when you do questions only, people who have comments are just gonna sit back and wait and vote it down. And that's what you got. So you shouldn't have been too surprised that this is what you got. Because you didn't wanna listen to comments, you only wanted to listen to questions. So those are my comments.
Okay, and the last number there ends in four, two, one, two. And you're muted. I can't unmute you. Yep, you're unmuted now.
I guess, I think I unmuted myself. This is, good evening, this is Shannon Loudon. And I'll just echo what Valerie and other members of the Board of Ed have already said, but add stuff to it. Number one, more than just respectfully requesting, I really am pleading with you not to further cut the Board of Education's budget. We truly, as an elementary school, cannot meet, and I'll just be very clear, coming from the corporate world, we have financial obligations that are contractual. If you choose to further reduce our budget, we will not be able to meet those financial obligations, and therefore services may have to be cut. Just a couple of quick facts. Since the 2015, 2016 fiscal year, Andover Elementary School's budget has decreased by 10%. We haven't had an increase in more than seven years. Meanwhile, over the last five years, because I've looked at student enrollment, student enrollment has basically been stagnant, and is going to be the same next year. So as with everybody else's expenses, our expenses increase year by year by year, and yet, we've had a decreased budget for the last seven years. Number two, the RAM budget. We can't do anything about it now. It has passed, even though it failed in Andover. I just want you to know that essentially, what the three towns voted to do is give $1 million more dollars to RAM for 10 students more than Andover Elementary School has. Let's just put that in perspective. Each of those 10 students basically is attributed with $100,000 extra in expense. Outrageous to me. And I'm not trying to criticize the RAM Board of Ed. As the Andover Board of Ed did, we did our best. We didn't get any increase last year. We haven't had it for seven years, and we're doing our best to meet what I think is the Board of Finance's obligation and the Board of Education's obligation. Which is not simply to do the will of the voters, but to do what we believe is best for the town. And as I've said, many years now, Andover Elementary School is one of the top, if not the top reason why people move to Andover, and it needs to be supported accordingly. Finally, if you are looking at from where might these dollars come, both for the town budget and Andover Elementary School budget? When I looked at the budgets, and when I looked at whatever was available to the public, and I asked Sherry Holmes about this, whether or not it was made available to the public, she confirmed that I only could get this information through through freedom of information. What I'm curious about is, and I've paid attention and have a memory, I believe right now, there is some $450,000 available and/or already sitting in an account from the $948,000 we got for the pandemic relief. And in fact, that was earmarked by the Board of Selectmen to be used for our community center. My understanding is, is $450,000 of that no longer will be needed for the community center. But it has been said that that money is to be used for future employees, for possible additions to the community center, because we have to be under $1 million, to not be covered by the Davis Bacon Act. And have to use union employees to do the community center. I just wanna suggest to the Board of Finance that we've got $450,000 that should not be being used for possible future employees at the community center, but can be used right now to minimize any increase in taxes for what I know is a frequent cry from the seniors. And justifiably, if they're on fixed incomes, even though I know the retirement accounts were increased by about 6%, Social Security and people on fixed income this year, let's help out everybody. Let's use that $450,000 that was given to the town for pandemic relief to provide some relief for the taxpayers. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, next on the list, Kimberly Persson.
Nothing to say at this time, thank you.
Okay, and the last I have on my is Liz. I'm sorry, I always pronounce your last name incorrectly.
Come on, try it.
Lowcheck?
Lowcatch, good job.
Lowcatch, okay.
Yep, okay, so.
My concerns, and I voiced them in my, in my letter, in the reminder on Friday, is the lack of by the administration of the school. When you go on Hebron and Marlborough's websites, you get very detailed, much more detailed budgets, and much more detailed updated expenditures. And I feel like we had a lot of high hopes for what was gonna come out of this new financial software. And I really don't feel like we've gotten what we paid for. The taxpayers haven't anyways. I mean, maybe you guys see something that we don't see, but as of last week, the expenditures for the school were not even up to date. And as a voting taxpayer, I don't even know how to even support a budget that's not even up to date. The budget that's on there is not even up to date. It's got handwritten marks on it, and I just don't think that is up to date or professional. And I think I would like the Board of Finance to really push back and demand more details at a more professional level from the Superintendent's Office of the School. That's all I have to say for now.
Okay, I think that is everybody on the list. If there's anybody I missed, please chime in now.
Yeah, I think that's everyone on my screen. Okay. All right, thank you, Eric. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Obviously, a challenging situation, I guess, for us all. I guess I'll open it up to the Board of Finance members. I think most of you probably saw the results, just so you have a good context for it. Linda did, I'm sorry, Linda. Diane did put the tally together. This failed referendum roughly 53% to 46%, 47%. Most of the respondents who actually answered the advisory questions voted or indicated that they felt that both the elementary and the town budget was too high. Slightly higher percentage for the elementary school budget versus those who thought it was too low. So it was roughly 60% to 25% on the AES budget, and 49% to 29% on the on the town budget. And again, there were several that were left blank. That's why that's not 100%. So I'm presuming most of those people who left a blank didn't feel strongly in one way or the other. We probably could have worded those questions a little bit differently, such as, if you feel like we're in the general range, then please leave a blank. Maybe that would have been a better way to approach it. I'm not sure it would have changed the results. So we do have the budget in front of us that we recommended to the town. It did pass that town meeting. Just one point of clarification, we, somebody had mentioned that they thought the town, that the budget overall had gone up about 10%. It is true that the overall town general budget expenditure budget was up about 10 and a half percent. Eight, eight, seven, when you did all the capital funds. So it wasn't quite overall 10%. It was a little bit less than that. The overall budget in terms of the expenditures being recommended for the town of Andover, though, was only at 3.76% over last year. So it's a little less than 4% in terms of the overall expenditures recommended. So just a little context and a little preface from me. I guess I'll open it up to the board members and see if anybody wants to make any points or suggestions about how to approach the budget. We need to come up with the recommendation such that we can present it to town meeting again on Tuesday, May 24th. Anyone wanna give a start?
Mark, I just wanted to make a statement, just, you know, to just, just one statement. And I, you know, I'm the newbie on the block, so I'm not gonna start the process. But I just wanted to say that I, that we all know as a town together, we're all in this together. You know, from my two and a half years of watching this, you know, it tends to be like, you know, just as an observer, as a person, that it might be town versus the Board of Ed. I really wanna put it out there that we really, like some of the speakers have said, we really just wanna work together to come up with some kind of good budget that will pass, that's fair to everyone, that benefits everyone. But also that those of us that are serving on it, and those that I've gotten to know all of you, you know, we really are dedicated, professional, take it seriously, and, you know, put a lot of time and effort into studying it. So it's nothing personal, personal at all. It's gonna, it's gonna be hard. I'm sure we're gonna have opposing viewpoints, or hopefully, we're all gonna be open-minded to everyone's viewpoint. You know, I don't wanna, you know, I always like to say that I, I may come in with an opinion, but I really can be swayed. I mean, I do listen to everything. I do study everything. And I do, you know, I do happen to work in a school, so I hope that's a perspective that I can uniquely bring to the table if questions come up. So that's all. I just really, you know, there's, we took it to town meeting, we had public hearings, there wasn't a lot of things said. You know, so we do take that in. Yeah, so me as a newbie, I just wanted to say, I think we can all come together to some kind of joint happiness, or something that, that can make everyone, you know, fair and equitable to everyone, and hopefully can pass and run the town well in school.
Yep, it's a good reminder, Joy. And I agree, it is a challenging environment, but this is what we're here for. You know, we have to find compromise. It's, that's our, it's our process, and I'm sure we can do it respectfully and with, with grace. So Rob, hand up.
Yep, I guess what I wanna say is this. As people have mentioned, you know, AES budget has been flat or decreased seven years in a row. There were, there has been, I feel, a longstanding feeling like their budget was too high, but I also feel that, but that feeling is out of date. And, you know, enrollment bottomed out years ago, and we've held the line, and we've held the line, and we've held the line. And whatever fat that anybody thought was left that budget has been wrung out. And now we're in a situation where we're actually gonna be facing, as our Board of Ed is telling us, a crunch point where we're actually gonna have a decrease in AES's ability to do the things that it does. And I'm, how do I put this? I have been supportive of the idea that the Board of Finance's job is to bring a budget before the town, and it's both responsible and passable. And those things are often in tension. All right, but we've gotten to the point, we zeroed out the budgets last year. We kicked the can to get it passed. At some point, I feel like this board has to stand up and say, hang on a second, to the town, the voters are not completely passive vessels. We can talk to them and explain to them that at some point, if you keep doing this, there are consequences. If we don't believe in this budget, if we think this budget is too high, if we as a board think that there's something that needs to be cut, then by all means, let's talk about that. But if it's just, you know, it can't pass. Okay, well, from my perspective, at some point, we have to step up as a board and say, hang on a minute, guys, we've been working this problem for years. We really do try, and this is a responsible budget. And maybe we go back with a cut, sure, because it was 53, 46, and that warrants some equitable cutting. And for the record, I would say that we would, you know, cut equally from the town and the school to make that happen. But at some point, our job is not just to offer up a budget passively. Okay, the budget failed, so we'll just hack and slash. At some point, we have to step up and say, look, we thought about these things. We considered everything. We heard from the boards and commissions and everybody. And we put this together, and we believe in it, and it's important. This, this is the sort of thing that our town needs. If we want to catch up on our roadwork, if we want to continue to have a top-shelf elementary school, which is, you know, as has been mentioned, I think one of the major reasons a young family would move into this town, then these are the things that we need to fund. And, you know, so I think we have to kinda keep in mind both of these things. One, that yes, it got voted down, and we may need to consider cuts. But at the same time, what are we willing to step up and say as a board to defend a responsible budget that may not be palatable necessarily at first to the town's voters? Maybe we have to tell them why, you know, more vocally, why we need to catch up on our roadwork. Why we need to do, spend money to cut down the trees that have been dying. Maybe we need to do that, a better job of that. So that's my gut take. I admit, I'm a little fired up about this. I just dropped my kid off at AES. You know, my other one's coming in, my ex-friend is bringing her there right now. You know, to me, you can't have a flat budget for eight years in a row and expect that the school just rolls on like it's no big deal. At some point, you hit resistance. Are we there? I think we might be. What do you think? That's, that's what I gotta say for now.
You're muted, Mark.
Sorry, thanks, Rob. Other members of the board? Linda?
Hi, I think whatever we decide to do, nobody's gonna be happy. But the one thing I do wanna say, I don't think you can really compare the high school drop in students and the elementary school drop in students. Cause, well, it was a few years ago, but there were three kids. One wanted to graduate from work in a machine shop. The second kid wanted to be a physics major, and the third kid was going into a senior year and didn't know what he wanted to be when he went to college. So the number of classes you have to offer those three kids have to be offered, whether you've got 100 students or 90 students in the school, because they're different. So you can't really compare the high school and an elementary school. You just can't divide the number and say there's so many high school classes. I don't know, I think we're gonna have a hard time. I don't think the budget's gonna pass unless we decide to cut something.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Louise, Diane, anything?
I have a point.
Yeah, Louise?
I know it's gonna be very difficult all the way around, but I thought the basis of us going to the town was to see what the town wanted to be done. Unfortunately, you know, it depends on who comes out. I think we only had like 400 people. I'm not sure if that speaks to if people didn't care or didn't understand. I mean, there was lots of opportunity for them to tune in on some of the videos and all that, and the meetings to find out exactly what's going on. So it's, I'm kinda in the middle of the road, but to a point where the town is speaking, and based on the questions we posed, and based on who came out, basically, the majority rules. And I think we need to probably make cuts, probably in both situations, because it's coming up high in both. But I think cuts do need to be made.
Okay, thanks, Louise.
Okay.
Diane?
Um, I kind of agree with everyone. I think the results of the advisory questions kinda pointed us in the direction that overwhelmingly, most people thought both budgets were too high. So I think we have to look at it and make some cuts, as hard as they're gonna be. There's, there's no easy way to get this done. If we don't get a budget that passes, we end up with this year's budget to work with going forward. So, you know, it doesn't benefit us not to get a budget that doesn't pass. So so we really just need to kinda dig in and just figure out what we can do and where we can make some cuts. I've gone through everything this afternoon, so I have pretty much a list of things that we can talk about when we're ready.
Don't we get specific? I was just doing it overall, you know, my observances from two years of watching, and then, you know, getting voted in, and, you know, really devoting myself to spending a lot of time learning, reading, listening to people. So I think I said it best in my letter, too, that I definitely support sending, you know, an increase. I definitely don't wanna see a zero or anything like that. I know we need to make progress. We need to fund things for the school. Mental health cannot be touched. I think that, you know, things of that nature, of course. But I think we have to come to some kind of reductions. So I wanted to just voice my opinion on that. You know, I think it wouldn't be worthwhile of us, I feel like we were a little passive in our meetings, Rob, to tell you one thing, you know, just to speak directly to you. And I took a backseat. I was ready every single meeting, you know, I studied up. I'm like, no, you guys all wanna go to the town.
If you wanted to cut something.
No, no, I could have spoken up. I'm very respectful of processes, learning people. I know my mind, and I know I can speak at any point. But I learn from people around me, and I listen, and I do that kind of thing. So I learned from all you, so I, you know. So all I'm saying is, I think at this point, I support some cuts, too. I'm not saying I need drastic cuts or anything, but in order to, you know, and that's worldly, too, like seeing inflation, seeing, I took time to go to the affordable housing thing. I think I'm gonna be our representative on that committee this past week, and they held the workshop where I learned a lot, even though I'm in every meeting and go to as many as I can. I can't believe that our population is really decreasing, and that the age 50 to 70 population is huge. So we really, we want our school to continue. We want to have those seniors to have affordable housing in town. This really is related to finances, so that their houses can turn over to families of young, with young children, to keep our school populated and going, you know. So, I mean, it's all kind of goes together, but it really opened my eyes, that affordable housing thing, which I didn't think Andover even needed to think about. So, I mean, it's all kind of goes together, but I, it really opened my eyes, that affordable housing thing, which I didn't think Andover even needed to think about. But I learned a lot just by going, so we'll talk about that another time. So I would like to see some cuts. You know, that don't hurt, I know that that's probably not possible, but we'll just see what happens. As we start our conversation.
Can I just throw a little ending bit, uh, like that I, I wanted to include in what I said, I ain't quite get there. Um, I just wanna say, like, I'm not saying that we shouldn't cut anything, that the results of the referendum indicate that we should. I'm not saying that. What I am saying, we should take a hard look. Pick the hills to die on, and then, whatever we do. I really believe that we as a board should try our level best to then come out strongly. And so, so say, say we're at X dollars and we decided to cut. Fifty thousand dollars from the budget, whatever it is. That we should then really be willing to, gosh, back that. Okay, we were passive, you're right. We took a budget to the town, we said, here's what we got. We didn't make, you know, it wasn't, the, the meeting was very, uh. You know, there wasn't much back and forth or anything like that, and part of that is just the rules of the meeting. Like the, the whole thing about questions versus comments is actually kind of baked into the, the way the meeting is supposed to work, and it actually isn't great. And I agree with that, but the, the point is, we should do our level best tonight. To get to a number we think is, is both responsible and passable, and then back the heck out of it, that's what I'm trying to say. Instead, i- if we don't believe in it, then why are we putting it before the town? That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, all right, thanks, Rob. Um, okay, I mean, I, I would, I think everyone's got a fair point, we all know that the, the. Budget went down at referendum, I don't disagree that we're probably gonna have to make some cuts. And I would agree with Rob that we need to make those cuts carefully if we do make them. There's three options here, we could change the budget and end up with an increase. We could present the same budget we did last time to the town and see if we get a different result. Um, which is possible, you know, you, you're not necessarily gonna have the same voter block and the second go around as you did the first, for better or worse. Or the third thing is that we can make some overall cuts, obviously, and present a lower reduced budget to the town. Uh, anticipating it's more likely to be palatable voters. And hopefully we're gonna pass and some agreement on that. Um, so I didn't say, any of you don't know, I'm just trying to recap the situation. Um, personally, I, I don't know of anything that I would cut, I am back on this budget. You know, we, we do have a lot of mechanisms by which people can comment or ask questions. I mean, we had several budget meetings and, and I know that a lot of people can't make them, that's just a. Modern life, right, we're busy. Um, all of us, we had several budget meetings, we had a budget hearing, we had an email address, you've, you know, we can always take, take letters. But that is limiting and, and Rob's right, kind of is baked into the process a little bit, by the time we get to town meeting. It's really about voting on the budget, line items, making proposals or motions to change it. Um, or, or otherwise, uh, we take a, uh, take a vote as we did in the past. So can we sell it better? Yeah, we probably can, I mean, there's, part of me is, has we've been selling it for about four months. Um, because we've been working on it as, as the Board of Ed, but it's not really reasonable, I guess, to expect that anybody's necessarily gonna. Follow it the way that we do and understand it the way we do and attend all the Board of Ed meetings, attend all the Board of Finance meetings, et cetera. So it's just, uh, um, maybe we need to come up with a better mechanism before we get to town meeting to communicate. And then maybe as Rob said, more forcefully or, or clearly communicate, uh, at the town meeting. That's, it's a little complicated, how do we do that without getting into the weeds? Maybe we need to get in the weeds, we're trying to avoid that, but. Um, it's, it's still tough without making it a really, really long and boring presentation. So I guess that's, that's my two cents, um, I'm gonna leave it at that for now. Um, does anybody want to make any motions or have any discussions about particular aspects of the budget? Eric, yeah, something there?
Yeah, just before we start getting into cuts, uh, I sent you all an email on the third of this month. Um, the, as most of you know, the state budget did pass. The state has capped the mill rate for motor vehicles at thirty-two point four six. But they use this crazy formula based on last year's taxation for how much each town is supposed to get. So the town of Andover will get in revenue, uh.
Hundred and fourteen thousand eight sixty-one?
Correct.
So that is, that is gonna hold?
It's, it's baked into the budget, that's, that's the official notice that we've gotten from the state, from OPM. Um, so, yeah, and they, they said we should get that in August. Now, you know, whether we do or not, you know, but. It's, it's the same as any other of the state line items that we get. Um, generally speaking, they give us what they say they're going to give us unless they do a budget rescission. But since they're expected to give it to us early in the year, it's unlikely that we would get a rescission for that. Um, the good news is if you just subtract that number from our budget. Then that gets us basically down to the cap line for motor vehicles. So essentially, that is a net gain for us of that hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, so that's all I have to say about revenue. Um, you know, that obviously doesn't cut expenses, which I think is what people are asking. But at least it reduces the bottom line to most people, which, you know, which is always good.
Is that money guaranteed? Is that a done deal?
The state budget has passed. Um, they gave an Excel spreadsheet to the town. Um, which I can share with you if you want. Um, but the first line is Andover, and when you get to municipal transition grant. Uh, for Andover, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-one. Um, you know, that's, it's as in place as any other number. You know, we have to assume that since the budget passed, you know, what they say they're going to give us for. Um, for all the funds is correct.
So just for the context, the information that Eric presented, I know we kind of touched on that briefly before we talked about it. But it was too late to bake into the budget. Uh, that would take our difference in the, that fact does take. Our total by taxation from four point nine percent increase to a three point eight percent increase.
Correct.
So I made that change running in the budget, but.
Uh, that's a pretty significant change right in and of itself. I mean, when I came into this meeting tonight, I, I hadn't caught up on everything, I'd been busy today and, uh. My gut reaction was maybe we could cut one percent of our, of, of the increase out, and that just did it. So, that's tremendous news. And I think we should really think hard about whether we want to go over and top that.
Only thing that we keep talking about, Rob, and I agree with you, it's great news. It's just that it marries the town to the spending, you know, and the fluctuating grand list, that's all. I mean, so I was gonna ask Eric. Um, and, and maybe I missed something in your translation. Why was I thinking there was only a fifteen thousand dollar difference that it would make? So now we're getting, we're getting more funds in from the state.
I guess for me to understand this, I would have to look at. If we can only.
I think the mill rate, the mill rate reduction or the mill rate difference was like twenty thousand or something like that, that might have been.
Right, I remember thinking that, you know, we didn't really need to factor it, so this is, we're getting that much more. And this is on the motor vehicle mill, or this is mill rate overall.
Motor vehicle, I think, specific.
Yeah, specifically the motor vehicle, the mill rate.
Yeah, I remember the whole comment, I tried to like take it all in, so that's a huge difference from a fifteen thousand dollar difference. And now we're gonna get in a hundred and fourteen something.
I guess I'm still having a hard time.
I just, I think it's great, it's a windfall for the town, and I wanted to know if we could have it as a rainy day fund. Or if, like this year, the school ran into trouble where unexpected things came up. So I, again, it's all good, I just want to make sure that we think about the spending, not any in particular. But that, that's always my worry, you find a way to fund something for one year when you guys used to use the fund balance at a bigger rate. And then, you know, it's a stopgap for a year and then we go over things. But again, I know Diane was gonna ask, she knows a little bit more.
I haven't followed this very closely because I didn't think it would be materialized for this budget here, because. You never get what they say you're gonna get, but I'm worried about it being called a transition, I'm out. And for me, to make sense in my mind of it. I would like to see our budget redone on the revenue side and break out motor vehicle and. Show me what the revenue would be at the max mill rate. So I can understand all the numbers again. You know, I, I just don't think taking a hundred and fourteen thousand lumping it off is the right way to go, we should really be correcting the revenue because.
Eric, can you give me the chance to show my screen?
Certainly.
And we don't have motor vehicle broken out separately.
Uh.
Uh, revenue tab. So we're gonna have to build motor vehicle at a different rate, now that's a whole change for us.
I am working on it, hang on a sec.
Yeah, it's, it's probably not a damage value, I understand what, uh, Diane was saying, basically what I did, Diane, is just added a, added a line. Uh, that allows, um. Oh, there we are.
Is that me sharing or you sharing? Oh, shit.
Oh, that's you, okay, that's fine, I mean, you've got it there, you've done the same thing I did, was basically just add a row into the, uh, revenue page.
Uh, no, I don't want to share that one, that was.
Okay.
Sorry about that, that was not a budget, uh, for. Uh, you want me to share the? Hang on.
But we're still having a reduction of revenue on the taxes because we can't tax at thirty-six mils. So, we've got to adjust our revenue down and add a revenue in.
Well, actually, I, I don't, um, I don't think so, because if we. If we include that money, and, and I think this is what Eric was getting at earlier.
Right.
Um, if we include that revenue in the existing budget, it drops our mill rate to three two point four four. The state's regulation says that the mill rate crap cap is three point three two point four six. So that drops our mill rate below the cap, but we still get the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And there's no loss of the nineteen thousand that we anticipated based on our expected mill rate. Is that what you were getting at before, Eric?
That is exactly what I'm getting at now, uh, but Joanne had a point also that. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, that, this will be, because the way the state. Is doing the revenues, it's for, as of the mill rate for the year previous. So next year, we will get zero, whereas this year we get one fourteen. So just be aware that that is a one-year revenue, uh, stream available.
You're muted, Mark.
Sorry, I was just saying, I think that's the absolutely correct way to assume it's gonna proceed, we cannot assume we're gonna have. Uh, any kind of recurring revenue like that. But it is exactly as, um, Joanne said, it's a windfall. You know, this is not something you're gonna get every year or get, you know, repeatedly or easily, so.
And we did go through quite a bit of work on this revenue calculations here, working these this year and looking at. What we can expect continued revenue to be, we've never really kind of offset. A windfall. Except for, you know, what we're using, use of fund balance every year. So most of the revenues we've have on our. List there is really stuff we expect to continue to get. At some level, so just to. Add it in and say we're not cutting expenses is really not, it was, in my eyes, a responsible thing to do, because it's just gonna be back next year.
Okay, um, what I would say to that is that, you know, these sort of fluctuations happen. Year to year and we deal with them as they come up. I'd also like to get back to the point that Shannon made about the, um. The, the four hundred and fifty K in grant money, I wanna, I wanna understand a little better about what we can and cannot do with money. Uh, I've been confused from the beginning. About what we can and cannot do with that money. Um, if that money cannot be used in a certain way, I need to, I need to know that clearly. If that money is there and can be used in the way that some feel it can be used. Then, you know, I understand that it's a, similar to what we've just been discussing, a one-shot deal. It still helps us in the immediate situation, so, and that's a lot of money. It's a huge sum for us, uh, in terms of our overall budget. So where are we at that, guys? So where are we on that?
The ARPA funds have to be used based on the regulations, and the regulations are all tied to COVID. Nineteen kind of eligibility requirements. So just taking money and reducing our tax burden, that, it's not an eligible expense. You have to spend money.
It depends.
Projects.
If you put the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a particular project and then reduce the expense line for that project. That might be eligible, I, I'd like to hear from Eric about the status of that, is that number real? And what is your take on how it could be used?
So the first thing I would say is that the Board of Selectmen is very clearly voted. To spend all of the ARPA funds for the community center. Um, there should be, give or take nine hundred and eighty or nine hundred and ninety thousand. I, I actually don't remember the exact number, um, in ARPA funds. There is also a community, a multi-use building fund that the town has. Uh, funded, um, you know, over the years. Um, I was just trying to see whether I could give you the, the. Hang on. Permanent fund total.
So just to clarify, this is not ARPA money, this is the town's fund.
Right. Put aside and earmarked for this purpose that we no longer need for, so we should think about that.
Well, so what I would say is you as a Board of Finance do have the authority. To transfer money from one fund to another and spend from funds as you've done in the past. You can't eliminate a fund, I think only the Board of Selectmen can eliminate a fund. But you can certainly transfer money between funds or from one place to another if you so choose.
So my question would be, if we have four hundred somewhat thousand dollars in a fund. That is a fund that is no longer needed because the project is fully funded by a grant, what are we doing?
Know that, yeah, we do not know.
I don't think you were at that meeting either. Diane and I were at the meeting and I know that they talked about at the community center meeting that that money was there. But that was, and I mean, I don't want to speak for the Board of Selectmen or anything like that. But I know there's gonna be a lot of other, you know, that's for the building of a basic, basic building. And then they are going to need things that tie into the building. You know, I don't know if it has anything to do with, you know, in the nursing office or in the things that. Everybody in the community can use, there might be things that need to be purchased. So it still was going to be earmarked for things that they need to purchase for there, but again, I'm not the.
So, so we're gonna spend a million? So we're gonna spend a million and five on the community center?
No, I got, again, I'm just giving you facts from being at the meeting so that we can all digest it.
No, 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 I'm I'm sorry. I I understand. I understand. You're just trying to be informational. I apologize if it sounded differently. I'm just trying to get my arms around it because, you know, we've been saving up for a while for that. And, uh, you know, we put aside tax money for that. And then, you know, if we get, you know, monies, we get them, we get the funding one way and we can, we could spend it another way. And I guess, alright, so let me back up. If we need that money for a purpose, fine. Okay, but just the same way that we looked at operating expenditures and everything else in our budget and scrutinize it and question why we need to spend this for that. We should look at that too in the same exact way. Um, just as hard as we would look at the AES budget, just as hard as we would look at the increase in, say, the public works. What is that money doing? What are we doing with that? Do we need it for this purpose? And if we do, fine. Then let's talk about it and let's make sure that we're in agreement with it and then let's back it. Again, this is my kind of unifying theme. Let's make sure that we're in agreement that this is what's needed. And then back it, guys. That's my point.
So I can tell you where we are with the community center because I'm on the committee. So we are far from finalizing on what, how much money we're gonna need. We have a site plan and we have a basic bare bones budget put together. We haven't even gone to the design build phase RFP to get a builder and architect to draw up final plans and give us hard costs. We don't even have hard costs yet. So, you know, the town put aside that money in that fund, in that permanent fund for the community center. I don't think we can take money away from that fund. And I would not be in favor of taking money away from that fund until we know what the community center is gonna cost us. And we're not gonna know that until probably the end of this year. After this fiscal year. Um, we are in the process. We have, you know, the Board of Selectmen has approved us to go to RFP for the design build phase. We're in the process of trying to put that RFP together now, but until that RFP goes out and we get all those bids back, goes all through CIP, we have no idea what the dollars are gonna be.
Okay, alright, that seems very reasonable and I would, I, you know, I tend to agree with Diana on this one. And everybody knows, I think I'm generally a very strong, I'm a strong supporter of the budget as it is. I'll just say that. I am also very concerned about taking something away that is an investment in this town. It's something that the taxpayers have wanted for a long time. Um, you know, one of the things I think could add value to living here. Um, it obviously adds value to the, you know, for our seniors, but I think also for the regular part of the community. And construction costs are not certain. This is something I would be very concerned about. Um, and if it were something else, I might feel more comfortable about doing transfers. But I, given the uncertainty around that and the fact that this was allocated for this community center, thinking it was gonna be a long-term project, I would be very hesitant to remove those those funds either. If we had a little more certainty around what it was gonna be, I'd be okay, I'd be out for it.
Okay. But I just wanna be clear on that.
Yeah.
There may be a conversation we'll be having next budget cycle, you know, when there's money still left in that fund.
Alright, I mean, i- if if it's not needed, I don't think we need to um, spend money just because it's there. I'd much rather see, I'd much rather take that, if I could do it right now, I'd feel confident that we wouldn't need that four hundred thousand dollars or some significant portion thereof for the community center. My own per- personal belief is I'd take that and I'd I'd add half of that at least to the to the road fund, road improvement fund and then you know, get the stuff done that we need to get done here. Um, or maybe allocate it to road fund and you know, back off uh, the expenditure somewhere else, but uh, that's that's kind of be my take on it. But I think it's still on the table and certainly somebody can make a motion that we we change the fund transfers based on that understanding.
Well, I guess my thought is this, um, we are in a a situation where we need to cut, we need to bring the budget in lower. The the amount raised by taxation lower um, for this budget to get this thing passed. Uh, I am, as I've said before, not opposed to making some equitable cuts. However, there's, you know, I understand the point about uncertainty, about, you know, do we need some or all of that four fifty uh, going forward to finish off, you know, put the finishing touches, if you will, on that project. I guess what I'm saying is that when we're in this sort of crunch situation, you know, everything's on the table. And that's something we should consider and that's, you know, maybe I will make a motion later tonight to move some of that money, not all of it. Certainly.
Diane?
Okay, I'm gonna dive into cuts because I don't want to be on this meeting till midnight.
I cleared my schedule. Sorry, go ahead.
I have identified about a hundred twenty thousand dollars that we can cut from the town budget. And I will give you my thought process on this. Let everybody hear what it is. I am thinking right now, and these are all in the funds transfers. It's not touching anything in the expenditure side except one item. So, um, so let me kind of run through that to see what everybody thinks about this. Um, to date, we have contingency fund in there at seventy five thousand dollars. I propose we reduce it back down to fifty. That will give us twenty five thousand dollars. We have a request from Department of Public Works Equipment. Um, they've requested a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I propose that we reduce it to a hundred thousand. That buys us another fifteen thousand dollars. Road maintenance fund, um, they're asking for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I would propose we reduce it ten thousand dollars to three twenty. So there's another ten thousand. Tree fund, we did a lot of tree work this year. Um, the request was for seventy five thousand. I propose we reduce it down to fifty thousand. No, fuck, give us another twenty five thousand dollars. We have a building maintenance fund um, that they're requesting sixty thousand dollars for. I propose we reduce that to fifty five, get us another five thousand dollars. And then we have a fire engine fund that they're requesting a hundred thousand dollars. I propose we reduce it to eighty and give us, and that will give us twenty thousand dollars. And then I propose that we reduce, eliminate the request for a part-time public work summer employee for twenty thousand dollars. That comes up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars right there.
You said that was a twenty thousand dollar line item on the public works.
Part-time employee, yeah.
That tally is, what did you say, to one twenty five?
One twenty. All those cuts, hundred and twenty.
Diane, did you think about, we do, I mean, this is a great idea of coming up with ways to you know, not hit any line altogether, but did you think about possibly? And I, no one wants to reduce anything, but maybe reducing the roadwork fund just a little more since they're asking for three thirty, maybe reduce.
I switched my thoughts on that because I was looking the roadwork to reduce it more, but um, got input from Jay Tuttle. You know, he'd rather give up that part-time employee and keep the money towards the roads because.
I saw him on my street today.
Because the costs are really going up for the roads with inflation. And you know, he's seeing that, he's gonna need every cent we can give him to get.
And I I'll just chime in, you know, uh, it, we all live in this town and we all see the roads. You know, this is a long-term project we've been trying to do and um, I I I struggle with every time we cut that budget. I know we need to make cuts. I I completely agree. But you know, it's frustrating because we fall further and further behind every time we do these cuts. And we had this plan. We had this ten-year plan. We were gonna catch up on our roads. And we can't do it if we keep doing this. So I'm I'm all in agreement with kind of a moderate path where if we're gonna make cuts, we make a little bit here and a little bit there and not really try to load it all into one thing like the road fund. I think we really do need to fund that. Uh, so Diane, I appreciate, by the way, I really appreciate that you sat down and came up with a suite of cuts that makes sense to you because we do need to dig into this and and talk about it in real terms. What is it we're gonna agree to that we think is still responsible and will still move us forward. So thank you for that. And, uh, you know, I I don't know. I agree with all of it. But I think that's a really good starting framework.
Diane, too, people have been having, that's, I'm glad he brought that to the table because they want a full-time worker. You know, which I'm sure, right. And then trying to find a seasonal employee, it's just hard. Conversation as well. I don't even know if they would find a person, you know, hopefully college student, but they have a lot of options and they were looking for a long. So I I like that he brought that to the table as a suggestion. You know, because now they won't be looking for the two people. They'd want their full-time guy to have the crew. Okay. I mean, this is nice that it's all over the place and not hurting any line in particular.
And I purposely left the bridges and culvert funds alone because we've got a lot of things coming up with those that are gonna be time sensitive. And we still have to keep funding those.
I think Jay and Eric said at one of our meetings too, but maybe they still need the money because you have to order equipment so far in advance. And there's like some kind of mini excavator thing that they want to order, but maybe because production is so far behind, they told us, we may not get it this year. But maybe we need to still keep that on the table. I don't know. I can't, I only speak to what I know. I don't know maintenance equipment.
I recall the same conversation. Uh, we're dealing with that and we talked about it on Capital Improvement Committee as well. Um, that the a- all of this supply chain issues and inflation and whatever is impacting everything. And so when we go to order something, you know, the lead time is longer than usual and the ability to lock in prices is more difficult.
Well, I think we have a, we can continue conversation. Certainly, there's a couple, you know, about these specific cuts. What I would suggest um, would be that we entertain motions on each of them individually. Unless we want to continue to discuss and we could discuss each one individually if we have further discussion about them. Um, but I, uh, I think that probably is a more direct way to proceed. It's on the record. We get some some options there. Um, or somebody can motion to uh, entertain the idea of making all of the changes that Diane is online as well at one time.
I have a question first.
Yeah, Louise.
Call a comment, Diane. That's a lot of great work you did. I I and I think everyone else appreciates that. Definitely, I'd like to hear um, Eric's take on what type of impact that would be on town and if he feels that something like this is feasible.
Um, well, anything's feasible. Um, I can just tell you what the pluses kind of and minuses for. Um, and you know, Jay and I have had a bunch of conversations about, you know, and I I gave it to him point blank about a month ago and said, look, at the end of the day, there's a likelihood that a lot of these are getting cut. You know, what hurts you the least? You know, what would you want to hold on to the most? Um, so from my perspective, holding on to the Bunker Hill Bridge Fund is probably the thing we need to because we know that's a defined expense and we know, you know, we're gonna be paying the bill um, starting, you know, a little over a year from now. You know, and and we're still gonna need more money beyond this for that when that comes due. So I wouldn't cut that one. Um, the other funds, I I mean, the 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 Fire Engine Tanker Fund, um, that's maybe somewhat problematic in the in the sense that there are two vehicles that at some point in the next, I mean, the fire department is assuming they're coming off the road. They're removing two vehicles from the road in about three years um, and replacing them with a single, you know, engine rescue combo. In other words, taking their heavy rescue vehicle and their their second engine, their older engine, which are both ones in ninety one and ones, I think, in ninety eight. Um, getting rid of both of those and buying a new, you know, single vehicle, but that single vehicle replacement today is about eight hundred thousand dollars um, on today's basis. So, um, you know, you've really got two options. Either, you know, you just tell them they can't um, or we have to start funding that. Um, everything else, I I don't really object to. You know, on all those funds, you know, we just do the amount of work. We have the money for. You know, building maintenance fund, whatever we have, we end up applying towards projects. Um, you know, the more money we have, the more likelihood we have to tackle some of the big projects that are coming. Um, but you know, it kind of is what it is. Um, the other one, I think you probably could do, um, it's not ideal, but we funded the insurance severance um, pretty heavily last year because we had a really large payout for Ed Kasich when he left. There's really only two employees right now that are a liability that we'd have to spend any significant amount of money on in terms of severance if they left. And that severance fund basically pays off the uh, if if an employee left and we owe them money for um, insurance and whatnot. So right now, we basically probably barely have enough to cover i- if our two employees that would be our biggest, two biggest ticket employees left at the same time, we could basically cover it. So you could take the five thousand dollars fund for the insurance severance and get away with not doing that this year. Um, so that's one.
Question, just to, what it, where, what would signify that they need an insurance severance? Is this if they had a payout instead of taking insurance?
No, not for insurance. It's for, um, you know, some employees get sick days and they're allowed to uh, get paid on one quarter of their accumulated sick days. It's an incentive to keep people from not taking their sick days frivolously, basically.
No, no, thank you. You just, I, when it's under insurance, I've never heard of that. So I totally get the other one. Thank you.
Yep. That's all I have to say. I mean, i- if there were one on the town side, I would defend, it would be the the road improvement fund. Um, you know, frankly, we've already made a decision that we are probably not gonna do any crack sealing this year. Um, because we don't, we need that forty thousand dollars just, you know, just an asphalt cost. So, um, but, you know, if it does get cut, it gets gets cut. We just do less road work.
So are we saying we would rather cut that severance number five thousand and put that five thousand back into the road maintenance fund and only cut road maintenance by five thousand?
I would, so I guess what I would say is that the one I would least like you to cut is the Bunker Hill Bridge Fund.
I didn't have any cuts for that.
Right. The second one, I, the second one I would like to not cut would be the Road Improvement Fund. So in the grand scheme of things, those on the town side, those would be the two I would defend the most. would be the Road Improvement Fund. So in the grand scheme of things, those on the town side, those would be the two I would defend the most. Um, but but that's again, that's just my take on it.
Well, for me, it's just moving numbers around. I'm only cutting the road maintenance fund by ten thousand dollars in my proposal. So if you rather take five thousand from the severance and only five thousand from the road maintenance, we still come up with a one twenty. I have no preference.
I'm going to suggest something just because I don't want it to get too far lost in here, but and again, thanks Diane for for uh for this work because it does spur some good discussion and some options. I'm going to suggest that we may take a bigger whack at the contingency fund. The contingency fund is just what it is. It's a contingency, right? We do it because it's a prudent thing to do to have contingency in there. Um, but we just talked about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar community fund that if we really got into trouble and and I know we don't want to spend this and I was just the first person vigorously arguing to not uh utilize reutilize that fund, but if we were to get in trouble later in the year in some real and significant way, there are some opportunities to tap some of those other funds with fund transfers down the road. So for me, that kind of militates against the idea that we may need that much in a contingency fund this year in a tight budget year.
So what do you say? You want to do like a twenty-five?
I know uh Diane advocated twenty-five to start with. I would personally at least take thirty-five out of there. Um, that would take us uh down to forty thousand added to the contingency fund. If we didn't have additional funds out there that could potentially be reused, you know, in a real emergency, then I would be very loathe to do that because I tend to be conservative about contingency planning. But given the fact that there is some, there is some another fund out there that we really don't know whether we're going to need it or not. Um, and it is a significant fund. I mean, we're not talking like we borrow half of that fund or something like that. I think that we could, we could take a bigger whack at the contingency fund. I would go back personally and and you know, fully fund the road maintenance and and uh and also I think most of the other stuff is is pretty reasonable and I share Eric's angst a little bit about the fire department.
Can I ask a quick question? Just as a kind of point of procedure? Um, in the past, we've typically had a contingency fund of e- either fifty or seventy-five K, I think, is usually our our level. Um, what have we used the last few years?
Last year, didn't we use like twenty-five thousand, Eric? I want to say.
I I think that's right. I just want to bring that up.
Got a lot of over-expended accounts this year, so we have no idea what we're going to use this year out of that fifty.
Oh, I I think we're going to use just about all of it. I mean, I I would be I, there's about a ninety percent chance we'll finish in the black. But that's about as far as I'm willing to say this year's budget.
So my take is I wouldn't want to go below about fifty in the contingency fund, simply because I think that's about the level we've used at most. Um, but I I totally understand what you're saying, Mark. It ma- it makes sense and we're kind of coming at this from different directions and we're coming kind of the same place, but I worry that if we go below fifty-ish in the contingency fund, that we end up triggering a mess. Uh, that's my, that's my only thought. Um, hmm. I am, if we're at seventy-five now, I am perfectly happy to cut that to twenty by twenty-five to get down to fifty in contingency fund. Beyond that, I start to get squeamish. That's my take.
Yep, okay, understandable. Yeah. Other input from the board on these specific cuts or additionals?
Can can I just say something?
Yep.
Um, well, if we go back to what we first talked about, the town thought both the the voters thought both the town budget and the education budget were too high. So we're gonna have to pick a figure for everybody tonight. I don't think it would.
I mean, this isn't the only cut. We still have to make some cuts on the school side. We can't just
Right, I know. That's what nobody's mentioned it. So I'm just trying to get the town piece.
You just gotta do it one thing at a time. It's one line at a time. Yeah.
That said, I think we should think about how what our total cut target should be, because I think we want to make it equitable, right? So if you're aiming, if you're cutting a hundred from the town budget, are you talking about cutting a hundred from the school budget?
I don't, I don't.
No, I'm not talking a hundred for the school.
Because this afternoon I was just randomly thinking, how are we going to do this that's fair to everybody and makes everybody happy? So the only thing I could come up with was the town has an overage from last year of over three hundred and the school has an overage of over two hundred. So if we took twenty-five percent of their two hundred and twenty-five percent of our overage, we'd come up with between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to knock off the budget. I mean, it's really a weird way of thinking about it, but it's the only thing that came to me.
You say two percent overage. I'm not sure.
Twenty-five percent. Um, if you look at the the education budget is two hundred and twenty thousand over what they asked for last year. The town budget says it's three hundred and something over. So if we took twenty-five percent of their two hundred and twenty and twenty-five percent of our three hundred and whatever, we'd wind up with between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty-dollar deduction in the total budget.
Yeah, I I'm personally not really a favor of just saying we need to be equitable. I think we need to go, really, we should go line by line by line through the budget and anything that we identify that we think is a reasonable cut. You know, to get us to a place where taxpayers are more comfortable, then I think we should do that. I'm I'm personally, I, you know, whether we cut more to the school and less to the town or vice versa, I I don't think that we should necessarily end up in a place where we assume that both need to be equitable cuts. I I understand what you're saying because we are trying to balance interests here. Um, and that is one way to do it, but uh but I just, I I think if we can, it would be better to target specific things that we think makes sense to cut.
Okay, I just figured I'd throw it out there.
And obviously, the school budget is a little different and I think everybody I would get, I know the board understands this and and uh probably most people on this call that obviously from the school budget, it's one line item, right? So we just have to make a make a judgment based on that line.
If we cut a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the town budget, that will bring the town budget increase down to seven percent. From ten down to seven. And then we would have to come up with a number for the school.
I just wanted to finish our conversation on the town. I just had
Yeah, go ahead, Joy.
I know we were expanding, so before we get too far off, it's gonna be quick. I I just wanted to ask Eric to follow up. I remember at our meeting and then we brought it up again. Did we hit on those line items, Eric, when you made suggestions at one of the meetings that if things got cut? I mean, was there anything else big that we're not thinking of that you, I mean, I remembered that piece of equipment thing that Jay talked about. Am I missing anything or are we just good where we are? I'm not looking to add to take more away.
So what what the board asked me was what are the five biggest?
I remember I'm in all the meetings, so I
Sure.
Thank you. Maybe that's the way you talk, so I don't want to attack you on that. Yeah, no, I want you to know that. I just wanted to give you a chance to maybe bring something to the table that we didn't think of. Right, you did say, thank you.
Right, and and I mean, I'm I'm not, if if you think about the the big changes that are occurring would be the addition of the fourth person at personnel or correction, the extra employee at Public Works. That's the biggest single-ticket line item. That's about, you know, a seventy-five thousand dollar. By the time you propagate all the costs for the employee, about seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, you know, and then then contingency or the transfers and the, you know, the the major funds. Um, so those are really the two areas where there's significant change. I mean, I I think the other, some of the other places where we have big costs, those are just essentially driven by cost of equipment and cost of of fuel and stuff like that these days.
Thank you. I thought there were specific things that if they had to be targeted, you guys had preferred. So I just wanted to make sure. I mean, if so, thank you. That's it.
Yep.
That I'm good with the town discussion, Mark. Thank you for letting me. I just had that thing floating out there that we might have missed one that would have then referred. That's all.
Yeah, that's a fair question. Yeah. Other discussion?
Are we ready for motions? I can make one motion at a time.
Make a motion at any given time.
I guess, can I ask a quick question before we go ahead? Um, if we were to approve the cuts that are proposed, what would the budget uh would the ultimate amount raised by taxation be?
It would be uh, you want a percentage increase or what?
Yeah, yeah, percentage.
So the
At a dollar amount. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the uh the percentage increase total by taxation would be two point five percent.
Okay.
So we were at a four hundred and something thousand dollar.
Wait, my two point five?
Yeah.
Just with that one twenty?
Oh, that also includes, that also includes a hundred and fourteen thousand from the from the state.
I haven't landed on that hundred and fourteen thousand.
Yeah, the hundred and fourteen is part of this whole discussion, right? Because that goes to three point eight.
Well, you could say the same about educational cost sharing. It's part of the budget, right? I mean, obviously, that's a, that's something that we do year over year over year, but you know, um, I I personally, based on what we know, I think it's your responsible not included.
I I agree. Um, it it the the budget passed, you know, and I guess
Including that, then taking a hundred and twenty away from the town is too much.
That's what I'm asking, by the way. That's why I asked this question. Do, are we going too hard here? You know, we we lost a a budget vote fifty-three to forty-six. You know, do we need to make cuts this deep? When we're, when we are, as we said, you know, when we we put this budget together, you know, we know we have needs. So you know, my take is, look, we should make moderate cuts. We should make some reasonable reaction to the town referendum, but at the same time, if we've got a thing, you know, we've got this hundred, what shall we call it, coming in and we can make a few moderate cuts in addition to that and bring back a budget that is significantly reduced, then you know, maybe we don't have to to make all of these cuts. Maybe we maybe we can come in in between. That's why I asked the question, two and a half percent. Okay. Uh, so three point eight, right, is the number if we make no cuts at all? Everybody, we we clear on that?
Yeah, three point seven. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, three point. Yeah, three point seven.
Uh, basically, three point eight. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We what the the budget we took to the town at the town meeting was just shy of five, right? It was four point nine? Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
Um, I made some adjustments.
I believe that's the case because we took that fifty K out at the meeting, remember? Um, so we ended up a little under five percent.
Yeah, four point nine, yep.
Yep. So we're at three point eight before we do anything, guys. So okay.
But three point eight, hold on, Rob, just to clarify, when you say three point eight before we do anything, you're including the hundred and fourteen K plus.
Correct. Yes, I am.
One time windfall, though. We we just want to make sure that we're being fair with the spending overall.
Yes, I I agree with that.
That's all. I mean, that could have been one of those funds that we have like Diane mentioned, when everyone wanted to dip into the possible community center, that's going to be another thing that could be something good.
Yes.
To have on this side for, we may, we have a finance department that's gonna need some work. You know, I don't mean
Two things looming over our heads right now. We have to hire a treasurer. Okay, and we have to get the financial department straightened out and the software straightened out. We're gonna have to pay for professional services for that software to be straightened out. So I mean, so we have two expenses, you know, we only put fifteen thousand dollars in the budget for the treasurer. I don't know if that number will do it or not for a part-time treasurer. So we have two variables that we have trying to figure out how we're going to find the money for next year, next fiscal year that we, you know. So that's why I would like to cut a little bit of spending because we can't
I I hear you. I I understand it.
Guys, be careful. We're not talking over each other too much. It's starting to get there. It's getting getting tough to follow. So go ahead.
I'll shut up.
Variables that we don't really have baked into this budget yet. And that hundred and fourteen revenue can offset some of that.
You mean, you had thirty about additional expenditures?
That that we don't have in this budget that I kind of
Yes, and I can really understand the point that if you bake in, you know, a certain level of spending that, you know, you're kind of going forward, it propagates. I understand that. I do. Um, I just want to be clear on how we get to where we need to go today.
I think we made little cuts that aren't going to hurt as we discuss them fully. So
Well, can I just make a motion if we're done talking? Because I know some of these cuts we probably are okay with and some we may not be. Do you want to just address each one, one by one, and then?
I I I think that would be preferable, but it's whoever wants to entertain the motion, we could do it as one package or we could do them individually. Individually is probably cleaner and faster. Um, but um I I would say we could do this.
Uh, Eric seems to want to say something before we get started.
I just make one quick point, if you'll allow me. And that is, if you're going to cut the twenty thousand for the part-time position, don't cut it all the way down to zero. Leave at least twenty-five hundred dollars in there. Because we don't, we often use temporary employees for uh, you know, for flaggers, for roadwork projects. And because we have a lot of roadwork, you know, we're without without hiring an actual summer helper, we're going to end up using, you know, some outside people to do flaggers. So don't bring that all the way down to zero. Um, you know, we don't have to hire a regular full-time summer helper if that's not in the feasible in the budget, but it does need to be something. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Okay, um, well, we certainly talked through a lot of this, but you know, I don't want to cut off uh discussion further, but I do think it probably makes sense for us to entertain some motions if there's anything specific we want to do here.
Let me do the, an easy one.
Go for it, Diane.
Maybe it's not an easy one. I make a motion to reduce our contingency fund down to fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second that one.
Okay, the motion has been made by Diane to reduce the contingency fund to fifty thousand dollars. Rob has seconded. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. I will call for a vote. All those on the board in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes.
Oh, we got one done.
One down, more to go.
All right. Um, you go.
Do you have any further action?
For the next one. Um, I would propose we, I make a motion to reduce the Department of Public Works Equipment Fund down to a hundred thousand dollars to save us fifteen thousand.
Okay, so it's a reduction of fifteen K.
Reduction of fifteen K.
I second it. I think it's good to know how much we're, thank you for including how much for reducing. Yeah.
Okay, Joanne, did you, was that you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry. I missed that. I was busy on the spreadsheet. Okay, so Diane Diane has moved to reduce the um DPW Equipment Fund from a hundred and fifteen thousand to one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Joanne seconded. Uh, discussion on this.
It it did we, I I just, the one thing I want to ask, did we talk through um the impact of this? I don't recall when um Eric, we asked Eric what the impact of all of this would be, whether this one had a material impact like in the next year or two. What this does? Um, that's the only question I have. Um, that's the only question I have. I don't have a big objection to this. I just wanna know, you know, how far we're kicking the can.
Right, I think it was primarily designed to, uh, fund some of the plow trucks down the road, given the increase in the costs and things. Eric's muted, and Eric, if you wanna put in anymore there, I don't know that there was a specific target for the extended.
So CIP approved, uh, Public Works purchasing, um, two pieces of equipment right away. One is a small skid steer.
I remember that, yep.
Um, and that's, I, I think that's somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars. And the other one is a, you know, a a commercial snow blower, um, but that, that's a relatively minor expense. That's not. The next big thing looming is if you look in our capital plan, we were assuming in the twenty twenty-three, um, so not this year's budget, but the year after, we would be purchasing a plow truck. Um, that plow truck on today's basis is around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, something like that. Um, so the cost has gone up. The last one we bought was around a hundred and ninety thousand. So in five years, the, the cost of that has gone up considerably. But I mean, if we don't have the budget to buy it out right, then we finance it, you know, that's, that's all you can do. So, it is what it is.
Right, that, that financing obviously costs us over time. Um, okay, that's all. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, further discussion or motions on this budget?
Okay, I'm gonna go down my list. Um, based on our discussions, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk about the road maintenance fund right now. We'll do that last, but I make a motion that we take the tree fund, move it down to fifty thousand, which was, is a reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars is what we spent in the last budget, so this is just a flat. Was taking away an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars. I second that.
Okay, so Diane, you are proposing that for the, uh, tree fund, tree removal fund, we take it from seventy-five thousand dollars down to fifty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Eric, can, um, you tell us what that'll do in terms of impact?
So.
That we asked him the overall, but that's.
Right.
No, I, I'm sorry. I just wanted to refresh her. I apologize, Joanne, but I'm getting a little tired, and I admit it.
No, 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 I mean, I think that's why we went through the whole, we asked him to give us the significance of this at the beginning.
He gave us the impact, but.
Okay, fine, never mind.
Cause I had a good point, and I, then Eric can speak. This is where I think that windfall can come in. You know, for things that come up this year, like, it, we did listen as a town that we needed these trees taken down, and they're very dangerous, and I'm sure we'll have it again. So we got a lot of work done this past year. So having the extra money available should such a situation come up again would be a place, right? That it could come from. So, but I'll let.
I guess the real question is, I think, does it end up being a recurring expense, and tree removal work probably is just gonna be a recurring expense?
I, I don't wanna fall behind. Is, eh, the, the only reason I asked, and I don't mean to be a jerk about it, is that, you know, I worry in all of this, every cut we make, I worry about what it does to our kind of long-term planning and getting ahead of stuff. So that's all it, and I apologize. I know we you know, my bad. Um, I know he's already spoken to it. I just wanted to bring it up again. That's it. I'll shut up.
So just so everybody knows, we funded the tree fund last year at fifty thousand dollars. So this is just funding it again next year at the same rate. It's just taking away an increase in the tree fund.
But Diane, the, the one difference last year is that we had just prior to the end of the budget, we had dumped thirty thousand dollars from the previous budget into the tree fund. So we actually spent somewhere around eighty thousand on the town side. Um, but we were incredibly fortunate last year is that we worked very hard to convince Eversource to commit significant money. So last year, we spent eighty thousand in town, and we got the utility company to kick in around a hundred and fifteen thousand. So we actually spent about two hundred thousand ballpark last year total on tree work. Not we, but we got accomplished. The likelihood of us getting the utility company to kick in every year is pretty small, but we're sure gonna try. You know, but whatever we have, we'll spend. So if you give us fifty, we'll spend fifty.
The last fund update balance that you gave me, Eric, from April nineteenth, we have seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars in that fund right now. So I don't know if we've spent any of that money. So, just so everybody knows where the fund stands right now.
Okay. Joanne, you had your hand up also.
I was sorry, I was agreeing. And then again, this is a thing, if it's needed, and I've heard this said, they're gonna transfer money to, to use it. So I think it's a smart way to fund it, and thank goodness you got the grants and you had Eversource help and got a lot of work done. And if it becomes a need in town, transfers will be made, right? So with funds on emergency basis. I don't see it as being too dangerous of a, you know, I'd be in favor of this cut this year, or to fund it at the same level.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to reduce the tree removal fund by twenty-five thousand dollars, keeping a level of fifty thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Me, no.
Anyone know? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes five, one, zero. Thank you, guys. All right, do we have any other motions on the budget?
I gotta go, keep on going. Uh, building maintenance, I make a motion that the building maintenance fund be funded at fifty-five thousand dollars, which is a reduction of five thousand dollars.
Do you have a second for the motion?
I'll second it for a second.
Okay, Rob seconds. Any discussion on the matter?
Pretty small cut, so I don't know. I don't know what that's really gonna do, but it, it gets us where we need to go, so.
Other comments? All right, hearing none, um, bring it up for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, motion passes, uh, six, zero, zero. Thank you. Okay, do you have any other motions or discussions on the budget?
I have another make a motion that we reduce the fire engine fund to fund it this year at eighty thousand dollars, which is a reduction of twenty thousand dollars. It gives them an increase of what we funded it last year of twenty thousand. We were looking for an increase of forty thousand, so it's just cutting their increase in half. So we'd fund it at eighty thousand, which would be a twenty thousand dollar reduction.
Hey, do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Louis seconds, thank you. Uh, discussion?
Anybody feel like we should go in, you know, ten, ten higher and kinda meet them in the middle more towards their target amount at ninety instead of, you, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, I understand what you're doing. You're, you're taking last year's budget and this year's budget, including the difference. Um, my take is, you know, we're all dealing with inflation and the increase in equipment costs and whatever, and maybe we should plan for that.
I, I tend to agree. I'm a little uncomfortable with this cut. Um, you know, it is, I think, more than what we did last year, but, um, I, I don't know enough about the particulars, uh, unfortunately.
I don't know what's on their slate of what they need, but a lot of the things that a fire department would need, uh, do qualify for ARCA funds.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, I'm not against to cut it, i- i- in particular, I'm just questioning the size of the cut, that's all. Maybe, eh, my, my gut reaction is, can we make your cut half as big? Can we cut ten instead of twenty? That's my take. Take it for what it is.
I could be swayed either way. I, I could go either way on that. I, I don't, I think you're already giving them an increase. You know, we're just cutting what their increase is in half. Like Diane said, they wanted forty more. We're still giving them twenty more, which is good. That's an increase to a budget line or, or what they are, you know. So I could be swayed if, if someone else.
And I had a disadvantage, cause I don't know what they need next year.
I, I wish Kurt was here. He's not.
I know.
Yeah, he, he would probably be able to speak to this more fully than any of us can. Um, is that one of my reasons precaution specifically is that he isn't here? Um, and so my take is, it's not a huge amount of money one way or the other. Can we cut ten instead of twenty? That's my call. Your motion on the floor is twenty, and so be it. Um, I'm just throwing it out there, uh, during discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Eric, and maybe you can clarify this, but I think that there's no plans to immediately buy equipment. It's more to, to fund, to increase the fund, like, fund levels for future purchases. Is that correct?
Uh, as far as I know, there's two things on the docket this year, and I was just looking back through. I don't have that note here, um, cause I didn't assume I was gonna be the one defending their budget. So I know that they had requested a replacement of the, uh, AC unit for the building, cause they have an issue with that. Um, and they I forgot whether they were planning on replacing their compressor, their SCBA compressor system this year or next year. Um, but that was a fairly expensive purchase. Um.
Yeah, that was a big deal, if memory serves. That compressor system was a big deal.
To try to take care of that this year.
Okay.
I thought we did too, I thought, but they didn't purchase it yet.
I think that's separate, but I, I, I could be wrong. From what we're talking about now.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I just wanna make one, just kind of procedural, uh, point that you know, if, if we do make a change and it turns out that we did it, unloaded information, we gain information later, this could always change at the town meeting too. This isn't the final, right? So there was an opportunity to reverse things if we feel like we did something.
We, we, we can increase, right?
Hmm.
We can increase.
Correct.
That's my point. Um, so we oughta be careful. That's my point.
So piece of information for everybody, as of April nineteenth, the balance in that fund is forty thousand dollars. So they only have forty thousand dollars in that fund right now.
Okay, yeah, because we just bought some.
They just bought, no, they just bought something. I don't know what they bought.
They bought a, a significant piece of equipment, if memory serves. So, that's, anyway, look, guys, I mean, we're haggling over a, a fairly small sum, but I just wanna err on the side of caution here. That's all I'm saying. And I think that based on the, um, referendum results, we're not that far off from a passable budget, and that we should err on the side of caution when we slash things. That's all. That's my take.
Other discussion?
Well, and I'll just put this thought out here, because we haven't talked about road maintenance, you know? I was thinking about giving them their full funding and not making a ten thousand reduction there. So, does that change anybody's mind on the fire engine fund?
I, I would rather fund roads, for sure. Uh, I mean, I think that's an ongoing major issue that we need to address, and I think that's the I, I'm, I'm with you, Diane. If, I think if I'm following what you're talking about, if we have to.
Right, I, I, I'm just trying to weigh the two. Do you know what I mean? It's just.
Yeah, and I would weigh it towards roads, guys. That's my take. Y'all chime in. But that's, my take is, the road fund is the most important, because we are, I think, behind. And we've been trying to catch up for, I don't know, the entire time I've been on this board.
Let's, let's talk about this motion if we could, just to move it along. So any further discussion on this motion?
Well, do you want me to withdraw this motion and then?
I'd like to vote.
You, we, I think we vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Just procedurally, you know, we can vote, and we can change it again if you want.
All right.
So to restate the motion, it's to take twenty thousand out of.
Yeah, so the motion is to change the proposed fire engine tanker truck fund from one hundred thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars.
Right.
Twenty thousand from the previous approved budget.
Very good.
Okay, no more discussion. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And abstentions, I'm going to abstain. So I think we had one, two, three, three ayes. Louise, I didn't catch your vote.
I said aye.
Okay, so it's four, one.
One, one, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my last motion. Until we get to the school.
So, hang on, that one passed?
Yes.
Okay.
It did.
Four, four yays, one nay, and one abstention.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion to reduce the Public Works Part-Time Helper budget from twenty down to seventeen five. I mean, we move seventeen five, leave twenty-five hundred in there. That's what I wanna say. For a thought.
So a reduction of seventeen five?
Yes, a reduction of seventeen, that's it.
Just to be clear, okay. Joanne?
Yeah, I think Joanne seconded that, am I right, Joanne? Did I hear you correctly? Okay. So this is to
And this is, uh.
Wanted to state for the record that that is, just to be clear, that is account one dash one hundred dash zero three dash zero three zero one dash one one one. Salary dash temp TW. Correct?
Yeah, let me.
That's on row four oh six of the spreadsheet.
Six, yes. So we'll leave, we'll leave a budget amount of twenty-five hundred in there.
Okay, um, so we're voting to change that budget line item to two thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
Or we're, we're, that's the motion underway.
Right.
Okay. All right, very good. Um, do we have any discussion?
It's based on our earlier discussion and hearing that Jay had brought that to the table, wanting to keep the full-time worker on board and just have a year-round worker. I'd like, and I think that gives us a chance to see what they do in a year with the extra person. You know, and, and they'll hire their temps, like Eric said. So I think, I, I appreciate him bringing that to the table. Um, and, and giving us that option. And I, I'd like to see how much they get done with the extra person and everything else. So I'm in favor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Have a, I think we're cutting that one pretty close to the bone, but I'll, I'll go with Eric's guidance on that, if he thinks the amount is, is accurate or adequate, uh, well, I'm okay with that. So, if nobody has any further discussion, I guess we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hey, thank you. The motion passes six, zero, zero.
So that comes up to. So that comes up to.
Well, one, uh, uh, one thing I'll bring up, if we want to, you know, normally as chair, I don't introduce motions, but Eric did. Uh, mention also the opportunity to reduce the insurance services fund, or insurance severance, insurance fund. By five thousand dollars, he felt that was a safe uh reduction.
I agree. On on that. Totally forgot about that.
Yeah, that's wrote seven twenty-four in the uh spreadsheet, for those of you paying attention. So that's only funded at five thousand dollars, but he felt that what we have in that uh fund is adequate, if I understood properly. So if somebody wants to make a motion, we could do something with that account.
I'll make a motion to reduce the insurance severance account. Um, to zero for this fiscal year.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Louise, second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Further discussions on the budget? All right, I'm I'm actually.
And so how much should we reduce the town by? I'm just trying to come up with the numbers here.
Um, I'm not sure of the total reduction, I didn't have it calculated that way, um, but.
Hold on, I'm at it, I'm trying to add it up.
Okay.
Two seconds. My handy dandy little calculator.
Well, did any of your proposed changes fail?
I did not bring up the road maintenance, so I didn't do this, so that I kinda getting.
So it's like one ten, right?
We're down to. Hundred and seven, five hundred. Does that sound right?
I thought your original proposal was one twenty.
Right.
And we didn't do the road part.
Which is ten grand, but we did add the five K, so there's a net change of at least fifteen. Um. Yeah. And then, and then we added the twenty-five hundred we left in the part-time.
Oh, that one, I forgot about that.
Right, okay.
So, I'm gonna just, before uh we get too far into this, I'm going to, I'm just gonna make a motion, it's like we've already discussed this. When I don't want this to get lost, but I'm gonna add, uh, make a motion that we add into the um budget, a revenue line item. For the um state reimbursement for the uh lost uh meat motor vehicle property tax revenue. In the amount.
I'll second that motion.
In the state budget of.
Hundred and fourteen thousand.
Hundred and fourteen thousand, and there's actually a specific amount.
So, oh, sorry, I, that's a rev, this is a round figure.
No, it's not a round figure, that's, that's what I'm trying to make. Hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-one.
There you go. So, yeah, the one fourteen was an approximate, all right. One fourteen. And check. I'll, I'll second that, by the way.
Any uh discussion on this motion?
I just wanna bring it up again, and so we're a hundred percent sure, we're getting it, Eric has a letter. That gives that an exact amount, and it, and it's only because it was a change that we found out today in the meeting. And that, that's all. So it's a hundred percent guaranteed that we're having that. Yeah, that's all I wanna be sure of. It's a good thing, so thank you. That's it.
Yep. Yeah, this was a uh, this was a, something that actually passed before, but we wanted to, we weren't comfortable with making that change in the. You know, before the town, at the town meeting, because it was still too new, but it seems like everything's passed. It seems pretty locked in, based on kind of what I'm hearing.
I have one question, cause I don't know the answer to this. Is this mill rate cap? Going to change from year to year? Is it fixed? How does it work? What's, what's the impact next fiscal year for us?
Probably a one-time thing. We're not gonna get it next year.
No, I I mean, as far as the state mandating a cap, you you're thinking it's just a one.
Oh, the cap.
No, the cap, I think, is perpetual.
It's enshrined in law unless they choose to change it again, right? Eric, do you understand that any differently?
Correct. No, there actually was already a cap. And that cap was set at forty-five. They just dropped the cap from forty-five to a new cap of thirty-two point four six, I think. The governor actually wanted to drop it a lot lower than that, but the legislature, the final budget passed that they agreed, that's what the limit was.
So the impact to us for next year is if. Expenses go up and we have to have a bigger budget, next year, our mill rate may be higher than what we can charge.
Unless the property values continued to increase, in which case that would drive the mill rate down.
Right, so.
It's gonna be a complex, bigger play, and hard to predict.
Was our revolve.
Money for the loss, is this just a one-time money for the transition? It's not gonna be in every year event, right? So this is just here. Now you figure it out next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fortunately, the impact to us was only, is only nineteen grand and change, based on our previous mill rate, so. We did, we weren't a high-mill-rate town on that, so I think the impact actually is pretty negligible. We can look at this as. As, again, as Joanne said, is a windfall, because it's not gonna come again, so.
Right. Okay.
So, uh, further discussion about adding this line item to the revenue. Uh, section of this spreadsheet. Of the budget. Okay, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Sorry.
Okay, sounds like we had unanimous approval at six zero zero, the motion passes, we'll add that to the. Uh, budget as a line item in the revenue uh area. Okay. Give me a moment here, just updating the spreadsheet, wanna make sure I'm tracking this stuff.
So if my numbers are right, this gives us an estimated mill rate at this point with the changes we outlined. Of thirty-two point oh eight. And that's including the point one one from this year's budget that gets applied to next year's.
Yeah, I have, I have a slightly different number, Eric, but I'm not sure I captured everything, so.
Okay.
Eric, are you saying that you deducted the point one one as well?
Yeah, it's, it's built.
Starting with the two, two, thirty-two point ninety-seven, which is kind of ingrained in my mind, we're deducting the. The point eleven, and then the changes we've made tonight. Comes to thirty-two point oh eight.
Uh. Correct. Well, the, yes, so the estimated mill rate, calculated estimated mill rate, if my numbers are correct, are thirty-two point oh eight. Mark, what did you have?
I'm sorry, give me a second. Ah, I see what I did.
Mark, am I allowed to ask a question out of turn?
Yeah, uh, the chair recognizes you. Go ahead.
Eric, are you able to tell me the total? Sorry, my other, my side computer's not working. Um, this, the total spending. Um, line.
Uh, so, are, are, are you asking the, just so I get the right one, you want, you're asking. The total amount by taxation? Or?
I'll take that one, total amount by taxation.
Total amount by taxation would be nine million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight fifty-two. Which would be a two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar increase. Two hundred and fifty-one thousand eight.
From last year.
From last year.
And that's taking into account the windfall and then the changes.
That's taking into account all the changes that you've passed by motion tonight.
And the one fourteen.
Yes. Correct.
That, that's brand new, right, right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and I just uh, I'm working with two spreadsheets here, I'm trying to reconcile everything. I think we can continue our discussion, and Eric, maybe you and I will just synchronize our subtotals uh after we continue. If I get this cleared up a little bit.
So what's that windfall amount? One fourteen, what?
One fourteen eight sixty-one.
I have to see the numbers, I'm trying to adjust my spreadsheet the same time.
Yeah. Oh, this is good, wanna make sure we're check, we're running a check on each other.
Like putting it here will do that. So. Okay.
Okay, so just so we have all the, the numbers at this point. This means that the Endover Elementary School is a five point one percent increase in the budget. The town budget increases by seven point two percent. The total by taxation increases by two point six percent. Um, and Ram goes down one point eight percent.
My numbers.
And we decrease the amount of fund balance used from last year to ye- this year. Um, by sixty percent.
Okay, my numbers don't match yours, so.
So Eric, you're referring to the, to the uh, to the revenue tab, correct? The numbers there?
Uh. No, I was referring to debt, yeah, yes, correct, the revenue tab under the budget by entity.
So, can you run, run through them again?
Uh, so, Endover Elementary School is still a five point one percent increase.
I see five point six on my spreadsheet, so I guess. Something's not calculating, right?
Well, that's because you didn't take off the twenty thousand dollars you had decreased from their budget, probably.
Yeah, it's most probably my guess. Yeah, it should be five point one three technically, but, yeah, the original was five point six five, but then we reduced it by twenty thousand, so that took it down to five point one three. So, Eric, what did you have? For Ram is minus one point eight, in the town, you had what?
The town is seven point two percent.
Okay, I get that one, okay.
And fund balance is minus sixty percent. And the debt service is basically zero. AES debt service is paid off. Yeah.
Eric, can you tell me what you have? So M seven three seven, which is the fund transfers?
Uh.
On the budget page?
M seven three seven, I have nine twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's where I got my error.
I have nine twenty-five too, so, hey.
Okay.
So fifty thousand in contingency. Department of Public Works is a hundred.
Yeah.
Eighty for the fire department fund, three thirty for roadwork. Fifty for tree removal, one sixty for Bunker Hill Bridge, bridge and culvert at a hundred, and building maintenance at fifty-five.
Yeah, I had a typo, okay. I must hit the. I reduce your Bunker Hill Bridge uh funding by, to five dollars inadvertently. That was not a Freudian slipper.
Wouldn't that be nice?
I want that thing fixed. Um, okay, so seven point two percent was your line item for the town budget, yep, that's what I got, okay, good.
Okay, so that's where we're at currently. Um, unless.
Total, total by taxation increase of two point six percent, correct?
Yes, that's what I have.
Two hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars.
That's what I have.
Mill rate three two point zero eight.
Correct.
Correct.
Hey, we, I'll agree.
It's, it's good.
Sorry, sync.
It's like having an internal double-check plus an auditor, right? Okay, good. Okay, any further discussion on the line items in the budget?
Well, we have to address the school. We have to make a cut to the school. Sixty percent. Of the.
All right.
That it was too high.
So.
I don't think we can ignore it.
Well, I guess we can discuss it further, or somebody can make a motion to reduce, or.
I have a quick question, I'm not sure. Um, this is just informational. When I was at the last board of ed meeting. Um, I just wanted to sit in, I thought, maybe Eric will know, I see Valerie's on the, the call. But there was something about a forty thousand dollar. So I don't know if that's another little windfall that could be a positive, was, there was some kind of auditor situation where there was forty thousand dollars. Found in the budget. I don't know if that's up for discussion. No, I'm wrong. Okay, so never mind, I thought that would be a good thing.
Why don't, why don't we uh ask for clarification?
Would you like me to clarify? I can.
Yep, go ahead, Valerie, thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. Um, Joanna, what she's talking about was, um, last year, if you remember, we asked the board of. Finance to put the forty thousand dollars into the non-lapsing account, which we're using for um, that unexplained. Cost from last year. What Sherry had said at the meeting was that um, that money had not yet been transferred. In there until the audit was completed. Once the audit was completed, then that would be determined to be the excess amount. From last year, and then it would get put in there. So that, that's what it was, was the auditor wouldn't let her transfer that over until the audit was complete.
Thank you, Val. I mean, I, I love it, I thought it was maybe found money or something.
No, no, but, but that's the, you had the right number, it was forty thousand, but it was just that she couldn't transfer it over. Till the audit was complete, Michael wouldn't let her.
Okay. Point of clarification, I thought that forty thousand dollars wasn't a hundred percent of the excess funds. There was money coming back to the town and then money going into lapsing.
Correct, we had asked for sixty, you guys approved forty and kept the twenty, so that's why the forty was going into our account, and the twenty went to you guys.
Okay, but I don't know if the twenty's been transferred or not, so.
I'm sure it's there someplace, we don't have it.
Have to move it, cause it's in, it's in the school's budget, so it's not in town.
So I, I don't know where over there it is, but I do know that the auditor wouldn't allow the forty to be transferred into the non-lapsing until the audit was completed.
Diane, anything left over? Diane, anything left over at the end of the audit automatically gets rolled into the other funded fund balance.
Okay, so the auditor should be coming up with more than forty thousand dollars that's left over on the school. All right.
Other discussions or anybody want to make a motion?
Well, we've cut over a hundred thousand dollars out of the town's budget. So I think we need to make some cuts on the school budget.
I just I just want to say one thing, we that we already cut twenty K from the town budget before we took it to the town.
School budget.
What?
You mean the school budget, right?
Yeah, with school budget, sorry. I just want to bring that up for out out there. And that said, though I earlier, you know, I was talking about things being equitable and all that. I I agree with that. I still think that. Um, I think we should be careful. You know, AES he again has had seven years of flat or reduced budgets. I think there was a feeling in town for a long time that the AES budget was too high. I think that many voters still feel that way, and I understand that and I respect that. And at the same time, I feel also that those of us who have been engaged with this process and been looking at their budget should be able to say either we agree or disagree, you know, um. Whether it's really reasonable to continue on this path where even with a flattened wallment for the last, I don't know how many years now, I guess it's been like about four years where it's been flat. We should continue to squeeze them, or if we are willing to accept the fact that you know, costs go up. You know, they have a new contract. Their raises are not insane by any stretch of the imagination. But they have to meet those obligations. So I am not opposed to cutting something, but I would be very, very careful about what we cut. Because to me, this is one of the big things we have in town, right? AES is a big deal in this town. It's one of the reasons why people move here. Um, and I'll be straight up with you guys. I have two kids in that. One of them is about to leave. She's going to Ram next year. But I have two kids in that school. They've benefited tremendously from that school. So I would be very, very cautious about a one to one, you know, okay, we cut this much from the town budget, therefore we must cut this from their budget kind of approach. That's all I have to say. Uh, I don't have any particular thoughts about what we ought to cut for their budget, what is reasonable or unreasonable. Um, I kind of, I'll be honest, I trust the Board of Ed. Uh, so y'all do what you're gonna do, but I am very cautious about hacking and slashing here. Go ahead.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Louise. Just as a reminder, we don't have any motions before the board, but go ahead, Louise.
Right, I have a couple of questions. Um. Well, first comment is I think we have to respect what the public has stated in the referendum. It's that they feel it's too high, at least the majority. Secondly, when my when my kids were going to school in South Windsor, we had issues years ago. Uh, and under the sports, I mean, they didn't want to cut anything major, and I know sports may be major to some people, but um, I have a question as to what what AES does for sports and if there's something that can be directed over to the parents of the students that would save some money.
Are you asking a question for Val? Should we ask her to answer?
I, yeah, if I could, please.
Yeah, sure. Val, do you have any input on that?
Um, we don't have sports programs here, uh, teams, sports teams at all, Louise, uh, in the elementary.
I did not know that. Okay, so there's no sports budget at all?
There is no sports budget. There's no, we have one budget. We have our regular regular budget, our general fund budget. We do not have both a capital improvement budget or sports budget. We have one budget. That's it.
Okay, it's kind of hard to know if it wasn't broken down, so that's why I'm asking. Well, thank you.
Just one budget.
Okay. So much for that, but however, uh, I do have to kind of respect what the town has said. And I feel this should be a cut. I don't know to what. But something that would reflect that we did listen to what the referendum results were.
Thank you. Other Diane, sorry, sorry, and first.
I am going to make a motion and then we can discuss it. I'm gonna make a motion that we reduce the school budget by fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a second on that?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, further discussion?
I think if you count, um, for the town, we've just cut like a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Plus, at the town meeting, we cut fifty thousand, so we've got over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars off the town budget. I think we need to do something on the school side based on the advisory questions on the referendum. It was in the highest rated number was the school budget too high, sixty percent. I think we need to do something. And if we reduce it by fifty thousand, that still brings them at a three point nine percent increase.
Okay.
Which is not unreasonable and just.
Joanne had her hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, she's she's next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Rob. I was gonna say, um, you know, it's always difficult when making cuts to anything, but I I think it's reasonable not to go one to one with the town on this and and come in a little a little lighter and then hopefully not affect the areas, you know, that um, were brought up earlier. Clearly, the A H M budget will help with the mental health or the services that the kids need. You know, like any budget, hopefully they can find, you know, like we did, we won't go line to line on their budget, but I I think it's reasonable with what the townspeople have asked. And year to year and from my years as just a a person looking at things, it's hard to compare all kinds of schools, and I've been told that. You know, we are lucky to have such a great school in town where the, you know, the kids do really well. Everyone seems supportive. We all want the best for the kids. Working in schools, I mean, it's it's a hard place to work, you know, as far as it takes a certain type of person. So we all know that. It's caring, giving people. You know, so that's that's number one. That's gonna help guide the education. You know, you get that and and it seems like from every meeting I've gone in the past three years being involved again in the town now that my kids are grown. Um, you know, that's all I feel going to meetings, you know, everyone has that. So that's number one there. But again, this is hopefully them looking at their budget, areas where they can cut back a little bit. And again, we always bring it up. There's the contingency funds that hopefully they can come to the Board of Finance or come to um, someone if there are drastic emergencies that aren't funded. I think I've heard that you all say that in the meeting. So I think this is a fair thing, um, yeah, this year. I mean, it's gonna cover their contractual and which is number one and and things that are brought up, the the heating and all those kind of things, and then hopefully they can pare down a little bit like we've been able to do without hurting it too much, you know, as far as that.
Okay, all right. Um, other discussion? On the motion at hand?
This is just to clarify, this is a fifty K cut, correct?
Correct. I also want to point out just as a reminder that whatever we do here will end up at the town budget meeting. And it cannot be increased at the town budget, meaning it can only be decreased or modified for the same amount. So once once we do this, it's it's done for at least this round of voting.
Yeah, and I I mean, and I know this is pedantic, but just bear with me. You know, we did cut twenty K of the budget before we sent it to town meeting last time, so it it's from the original ask, we're down seventy now. Just, I mean, just to be clear.
Thank you. Yeah, further discussion?
I was just gonna add to that, Rob. I mean, that that was hard to do, but there was a specific reason, I think, that that was made at the time.
Yes, it was. I agree.
I'm not trying to be confrontational. I mean, I I understand. You know, but there, I mean, there was a reason that.
Neither, I am not trying to be confrontational either. I am simply dating fat.
It's information.
I was gonna finish my point, but I'm good. I mean, we would have left it. Had there not been major changes, you know, it probably would have went as is, but there was a specific reason, and that's why I think it was addressed.
If memory serves, I I mean, I didn't really disagree with it. I'm just pointing it out. That's all. I'm not, yeah, again, this is, I'm not trying to pick a fight, Joanne. I'm just pointing it out.
Let's let's address the motion if we could, guys.
Yeah, let's do that.
Discussion on the fifty thousand dollar reduction proposed. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote then. Um, all those in favor say aye. Okay, all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes four two zero. And this would reduce the AES budget line items from four hundred and four million one hundred two thousand seven eighty seven. Uh, that would take it down to four million fifty two thousand seven eighty seven. But I have, okay. So just as a point of information, that leaves the um, total to be raised by taxation now at uh, nine million nine hundred thirty eight thousand eight fifty two, which is an increase of two point one percent. I've captured everything, and I think I have.
So just for, just to clarify, I mean, you know, we took the first budget before the town. It was just shy of five percent. Now we're just over two, so that's a pretty significant decrease. I I hope that this board will step up and defend this budget. That's all I have to say.
Do we know that? Do we have any other discussion or motions to be made with this budget before us?
Mark, can you just repeat? Sorry, can you repeat the total over the nine million?
So the this is the total total to be raised by taxation is nine million nine hundred thirty eight thousand eight fifty two, which is a two point one percent increase.
And then we're still, I mean, and I think Diane quoted earlier, so we did reduce the school budget, but there's still a significant increase over last year. So what was the percentage? Three, which?
So that leaves the school increase at three point nine percent.
I just want to update my stuff. Thank you.
And the the town budget, I think, remains a an even higher increase.
For the town, yeah, seven point two percent. Eric, I don't know if you're following along, if you're checking those numbers.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you. I just was keeping a cheat sheet to to double check.
At the same numbers as you, so hopefully all of our spreadsheets are in sync.
That gets you to an estimated mill rate of thirty one point nine one.
That's what I got.
Correct.
All right. Well done, everyone. I hope we can all, you know, step up and defend this budget.
Hey, Rob, can I ask a question? In this, this is just asking, are you thinking that by my letter in the, I mean, I always defend everything that we do?
Well, no, I think I I I don't.
He thinks we, does he get the sense that we won't?
Well, I think if I'm not, I don't want to put words in Rob's mouth, but.
I have not read your letter. We either have reached for my own mental health, so I have not read your letter. That is not what I'm talking about. I am talking about the idea that when we go to town meeting and we go to referendum, sometimes it's a very dry process whereby the Board of Finance shows up and, you know, we do our best, whatever. But, okay, so look, I'm not, this isn't because you wrote a letter to the River East, which I didn't even know about until somebody told me about it tonight. So no.
Is if we if we need to beef up our presentation at the town meeting and or communicate forcefully elsewhere, so.
That that what I'm saying is if we agree that this is a good budget, let's back it. And you know what? If that, hmm, if 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 you feel that's criticism criticism of you, then I don't know.
We're getting off agenda, guys. I think.
Question for clarification. That's all I wanted, and thank you. Yeah, because I would have explained myself that I just, it was just, yeah, so thank you. I just wanted to make sure that he didn't think we were, because I think we're all working hard to get to it. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other discussions about the budget as it stands now? Any other line item changes, requests? We could entertain a motion to accept the budget as amended and present that to the town meeting on Tuesday if nobody else has any other changes they want to entertain.
I'll make a motion that we present this budget at the next town meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes six zero zero. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mark, as always.
If we have no further discussion, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is item four correspondence. Uh, I don't know if anybody's received any correspondence. We did have one email I know from member of the public that went out to all the board members. Uh, is there anything else or anything coming into the town that we should be aware of?
Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item five, which is the public speak portion of the second public speak portion of the agenda meeting on the meeting. Eric, do you want to go ahead and do the rounds?
Sure. So first up on my screen, Valerie Bruno.
Thanks, Eric. I'm disappointed to say the least, seventy thousand dollars from a budget that was as tight as could be. And Louise brought up, don't you have a fund for this? Don't you have a fund for that? We have an operational capital, everything all in one. And again, disappointed, very disappointed. There will definitely have to be ways for us to figure out how to make programming cuts here in the building. I respect the process. Obviously, I've been on with you for two and a half hours. I can see the process. I just disagree with it, and my job is to advocate for the school and the kids and the family.
Yeah, thanks, Val.
Okay, next up, Jeff Murray.
No comment, Eric. I'm I'm good.
Okay, after Jeff Murray is Scott Person.
I'm good also, Eric.
Okay, Liz, and I'm gonna try here. Low check. Am I closer?
Close, low catch. Thank you.
Low catch, sorry.
Uh, thank you, um, as good as I can be for now.
Okay, Kimberly. Okay, Kimberly Person.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Okay, Caitlin McIntosh.
Hi, I apologize because I did miss the beginning of the meeting um because of the kids' school concert. Um, so I apologize if this is repeating something. Um, I just wanted to thank you guys for your time tonight and your dedication to this town. Um, I did have a question in regards to the non binding questions that are on the ballot. Um, I know there was some discussion last year that they were kind of confusing, um, being that there's only two answers. And I know that the system only allows for two answers. I guess I was wondering if they could possibly be written to make it very clear that if you do not answer the question, that means that you think the budget is where it should be. As opposed to thinking that you have to choose too high or too low, or possibly rewriting the questions in a way that would make it so that someone could. Answer like, is the budget too high? And then a different question, is the budget too low? Um, with a yes or no instead of too high or too low as answers. So just just a clarification question more than anything, but thank you guys uh very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Caitlin. We did actually did. You toss out a couple of ideas around there and it is a little bit limiting uh how we do it, so uh duly noted. Thanks.
Okay, and the last three are cell phone numbers, uh phone ending in nine five three seven.
Yeah, my only question on this is there are many statements during the evening that the um elementary school budget has been flat for the past, I don't know, four or five, six years. The numbers have been going around. But at the same time, we're saying that the increase was originally five point one percent and it's been now is three point nine percent. I'm still trying to justify that it's been flat, but it has an increase and I just don't understand that.
I think what we're talking about specifically was the, in the past, there's been a, for the school only. Um, that the, there haven't been increases to the school budget, to the AES school budget. So some of the numbers we've been talking about are combined numbers for the budget as a whole. So the school, the school hasn't always had increases that sometimes the town has had or vice versa or RAM has had. So there's, it's a combined. Uh, budget and that can be a little confusing about what what exactly percentage we're talking about at that point. So right now, the way the school, there is a school, an increase to the school budget and uh we ended up at uh, whoops, wrong one. Go ahead, Eric.
Three point nine percent.
Yeah, yeah, three point.
Right, yeah, right. And and for years and years, you know, the AES budget itself. Has dropped but or stayed flat, but you know, that doesn't control the RAM budget or the town budget. Like, it it's one component of the whole.
Yeah.
It just seemed that. We didn't talk about flat budget until you got to the school budget and then you kept saying, you know, it's been flat for the last five, six years or whatever and and I don't think that it really has been. I think that we're. There's been a lot of shifting of money between the town, you know, whether it's a finance person and so on, and I I I don't think that we're always being um above board in all of those statements. So um, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that.
Okay.
Okay, next, cell phone number four two one two. Please unmute yourself if you'd like to speak.
Uh, this is Shannon Loudon. I just want to thank the Board of Finance very much for all of your hard work uh prior to tonight and tonight. Um. I too am am very disappointed in the results, uh just knowing how much effort and time and scrutiny uh the Board of Education put into our budget considerations. And arrived at a budget um that was unanimously passed by the Board of Education. I know that we all have difficult decisions to make, but I I don't know. I I feel as though I I've been on the Board of Ed for almost six, for six years now. And I feel like every year we are criticized for having too high a budget. And yet this year we had more than six budget seminars, budget workshops. And nearly a person came on there and said, um, this is where we propose you cut, or why can't you cut here? Whereas tonight, we heard about fund after fund after fund that the town has. Um, we've been accused of having all those funds at the school level. We do not. Um, so I think a seven point two percent increase for the town and a three point nine percent increase for the school. I I understand it. I appreciate all the work that you did. I just don't know that knowing what we need at the school, that that's going to be viable. And just quickly in response to what was just said, as I said in my comment at the beginning of this meeting. Since the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen fiscal year, the AES budget has decreased by ten percent. The total budget has decreased by ten percent, while in the last five years, our student enrollment has been stagnant. Thank you for your work. We'll see what happens next Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the last number, I think that's Marina, correct? Five five seven nine?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. So that should be it unless there's somebody I'm missing. If there is, I apologize.
Uh, I think that looks correct to me. I think you captured everybody. Thank you, Eric. Okay, uh, we'll move on to agenda item six, which is adjournment. When anybody can make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Louise, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Rob, any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll work on the presentation, make sure.